Good evening, welcome to the Joint Town Council Southbridge School Committee meeting of Monday, August 26, 2019. Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call now, Secretary.
Mr. Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counsel Chair Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
All Council members, School Committee.
Chairman Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Bishop. Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Mr. Murch.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum of both bodies. I'd like to welcome the School Committee here with us tonight to do a, to fill a School Committee vacancy pursuant to the fact that there was a failure to elect of the last town election. So I welcome the School Committee and the members here with us. I look forward to filling that position tonight and working with the School Committee as we go forward in the next year to address issues in the town and with our school system. So we have two candidate requests to fill the School Committee vacancy effective immediately through June 9, 2020, which would be the next election date, according to the Southbridge Home move charter, Chapter 3, Section 3-2-1. The two individuals that have expressed interest and put their names in for consideration are Catherine Lapriore and Michael Montigny. So Chairman Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to say before we bring those candidates forward?
Yes, thank you Chairman Jovan. I just want to thank both applicants for applying. I look forward to hearing what you say and the Southbridge School Committee is, while having no power, is an important body for helping express the will of the community to the receiver and working jointly with the receiver as we go through this process. So thank you, you both, for volunteering to serve on this committee and I look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you Chairman. So at this time, the two candidates will ask Catherine Lapriore to come forward. We'd ask you to just give a brief introduction to both committees and then we'll have an opportunity for councilors and School Committee members to ask you questions if they so choose. So welcome.
Thank you. Kathy Lapriore, 51, Mark Avenue. I don't have anything really fancy to say, just that I'm very interested in the school system and the kids. I have a grandson who goes to West Street School and he's very happy there. My husband and I go to the events at the school, any open house that they may have because I like to get the feel of the school and, you know, what people are saying while we're there. I try to talk to kids at the library. I work in the children's room at the library. I've been there for 23 years. I come to all the School Committee and Town Council meetings. I just think it would be an honor to serve on this even though there is no vote that you have. It's still getting ideas from people, learning a little more about it other than Facebook and all the negative stuff you hear. I like to hear the positive things and put those things out in public. I went to the two meetings that Andrew Murch had at the library for, it was a roundtable thing. My husband, Tom, and I went to the first one. I guess we were the only ones there. We went to the second one and there were two more people at it, so maybe each time there'll be more. And I thought it was a great idea that Mr. Murch had to have kids come, the students come, and talk about their concerns or the things that they like about it. I heard someone recently who had a choice of going to a different high school. They wanted to stay here. I thought that was wonderful to hear. Mr. Valar is here. Nobody really wanted to have to have a receiver, but he's here and I think that he's trying to work to get us in the right direction. It's a tough thing to be going through, but I think that he has faith in us because he hasn't left yet. He's still with us, so I don't know. I would really be honored to serve on the School Committee, but Michael would be good too. Whatever happens, happens. I'll still come to all the meetings and be as involved as I can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Counsel Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Mrs. Lapriore. Can I ask why you didn't put your name in at the local election and why you're doing this now?
I have been approached, at the last few meetings, I've been approached by some of the members of the committee and I guess that gave me more encouragement to try for it. Just, you know, I guess that's basically why I did it now.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions. So would you say...
Counsel Steves, you need to speak up because you can't hear.
What would you say your key issues are that you would like to work on on the School Committee?
Whatever will keep kids here in our system and the parents, to keep the kids here, get the parents' interest in helping instead of running away to something that they think is better. I feel that if the kids weren't learning anything in our school system, fine, but I just, I don't see that personally with my grandson. He loves it there. And I have another grandson who goes to a different school and he loved it while he was at West Street School, but, so I want to keep, I would love to have them come back to ours. I don't know if that would ever happen, but I would like to do anything that would be positive to keep the kids with us.
Okay. What's your general feeling on the positives and negatives of the receivership?
Positives? The kids, there was a group of kids, I think it was last year at the high school, who got tired of hearing all the negative stuff and there was an article about them in the paper and they talked about what a close community, they felt it was at the high school, and they just happened to have a good experience. So I just like to focus on anything like that. I'm not naive enough to think that everything's wonderful and that it's going to be taken care of quickly. I hope it's sooner rather than later, but I know, that's why I would like to learn more. And being on the School Committee, I would learn more of what's going on than just what you hear out there. Facebook can damage a lot of things and there have been a lot of good things on Facebook too lately, which I appreciate.
Okay. And what would you say your, I know that the Council has talked a little bit about the idea of potentially merging the DPW and the School Maintenance Department. So what's your take on that?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I said the Council has thrown on the idea of potentially merging the School Maintenance Department and the DPW. What's your take on that idea?
To be honest with you, I haven't heard a lot about that. So I would have to learn a little more about it and see what would be, but yeah, I really haven't heard a lot about that.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
My question is, if there was a petition to go to a ballot question to vote, to ask the Board of Education to exit Southbridge, would you support that or not support that?
To do what? Sorry.
If there was a petition.
Yep.
To put a question on the ballot.
Yep.
To let the people of Southbridge vote on whether to continue on this road or to ask the state to leave this receivership, would you support the petition to ask them to leave or would you not support that?
Huh. I didn't know there would be a possibility of that at all. It's really hard to say because, like I say, I'd like to have faith in things getting better with having the receiver here. I wasn't for it. I'm not crazy about it. I would like to go back to what we had. If that would work, I would, I would love that. I guess it's good to put things on the ballot to, that's the fair way to do it, have something on the ballot to let everybody decide, not just a few people have that decision.
Good.
Kathy, thank you.
You probably have to do, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for volunteering your name. I appreciate it. I've approached you in the past about it because I think you would be a good fit just by talking with you. My son's been to the library too, so I, he still remembers Ms. Kathy from when he was little. So that's, that's a good thing to see. My question is, what, if you could have one goal, something that you would like to achieve during your appointment, what would that be? What would you like to see or what would you like to be able to get accomplished during the one year that you would serve?
I think something that I hear a lot is communication because you hear that something's going one way, then you hear it another way and it's very confusing to not know exactly. That sounds confusing right there, the way I'm saying it. Communication is a big thing and to, I don't know, just to do whatever I can to work with whoever to help make things better. I don't know if that really answers it very well.
And I got one more question. Would you support a community service graduation requirement for high school students?
Sorry?
Would you support a community service requirement for high school students in order to graduate?
It would be a nice thing. I don't know if it would have to be a requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Shea.
First, I want to say something very positive about Kathy. She really, really is here at every meeting. Sometimes even the School Committee is not here at every meeting. Kathy, you and I share a penchant, a desire to see kids read. Is there anything you would do to increase the ability of our students to put their hands on books and to increase their reading fluencys?
Well, I would try to encourage them to come to the library. That's a big thing, to get them there. Hmm, that's a very good question, how to get the books to them. I know the schools have been asking for books and I think that's a great thing. If anybody had any suggestions, I would jump on it and help with that any way I could.
Thank you for your name forward and I do appreciate the fact that you do come to every meeting. It's, no doubt, it's always nice to see you and sometimes you are the only person that's here in the audience.
I like Southbridge and I'm hoping for the best all around.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, a couple of questions. First, if you were selected, a year from now, would you put your name in for reelection?
I would.
Okay. And if not selected, would you put your name in for election next year?
I may.
Okay, fair enough. My other question is, given the relationship between the receiver and the School Committee as it's currently constituted, the receiver, you know, pretty much has all the power of the School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools, which all the power is vested in him, so the School Committee no longer has any power. But what would you see your role or the role of the School Committee to build a relationship with the receiver so that you could prove to the state that we're in a position to go back to a School Committee Superintendent relationship?
I guess you really have to try to work as closely with you can and have as much contact with the receiver as possible and try to collaborate the ideas and, and work on these things, make it happen, not just put them out there and it's up in the air somewhere, but to really do what you can to work as a committee for the good of the schools. Anything we can do to get it any closer to getting off of Level 5.
Okay. And furthermore, and this is no slight to my colleagues on the School Committee, to watch a meeting that only lasts nine minutes and not get a lot of information, how would you, as a School Committee member, employ your fellow School Committee members and the receiver to have a substantive meeting that information to the public is brought out so that there's some transparency in the relationship between School Committee and receiver?
I know that we only get our local newspaper on a Thursday, but get whatever you can in there, first of all. That's, not everybody gets the paper, but some people actually do and like to read, read it in paper and they, they feel more involved that way. And I don't know, I try to work with the receiver and the School Committee, try to get parents more involved. I really don't know how you force that. It's not a new idea to try to get parents involved. That's been around forever. Yeah, it takes a little experience. That's why, you know, it, once you're on a committee like this, you learn things and how to work together and just try to do the best you can.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from Counsel Dana?
Thank you for applying for the position. I appreciate the fact that you want to be even more involved. My question is more general. How long have you been coming to these meetings on such a consistent basis?
I don't know. I guess three years, most recently for School Committee. I've been coming to the Town Council meetings for several years.
Several years, okay, so it's been quite a while, fair to say. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Mr. Montigny?
Good evening. It's been a long time since I've seen most of you up here. So should I just start with the introduction?
Yep.
All right. Mike Montigny, born and raised in Southbridge, Mass. I graduated in 2006 from Southbridge High School. I was the station manager for Cable Access for a few years. I filmed and attended every Town Council and School Committee meeting for about a four and a half year period between 2012 and 2016. I've worked on and off for Southbridge Public School System for six years. I currently teach at a different district, 7th grade science. I've always wanted to be a part of these committees ever since I started filming them. I always was interested in how much good work that you guys do on a volunteer basis too, which is really the, the best part. I, I don't think I've actually, I've done work for the town every year for the last seven years in some capacity, so I haven't been able to apply. You can't have a town position or school position and be on a council or school committee. I have a wealth of knowledge of being in the building, in the building last year, in the building five years ago. I know the ins and outs of everything and I've always wanted to just do everything I can for Southbridge to try to make it a better place while I'm still living here. So since I'm no longer affiliated with a town job, I got to the first committee I found, which was this one, opened up in the summertime and I would love to be a part of the one-year commitment to that. And, you know, I, I know you guys are going to ask, would you run again next year? If I was appointed, I would be very interested in running for either School Committee or even Town Council. I've always wanted to help as much as possible in the best way possible, so I'm open to doing anything I can to help Southbridge while I'm still here, living in town. And that's, that's it.
Counsel Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And I know you already probably, you actually did answer it, but I'm going to ask you anyways because I asked Mrs. Lapriore.
Sure.
Why now? Why didn't you run when, in the local town election?
Right. I, I did anticipate still having town employment of some kind at this point, so it was not in the cards for me in about March or April to be pulling papers for a committee. Yeah. And now, now that it's not in my plans, I'm very much interested in, in being on the committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Steves.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to ask the same questions that I asked her too.
Sure.
I'm going to start first off with the, the, what's your feeling on the positives and negatives of the receivership?
Well, the positives, I, I can't really grasp too much. I would have thought that they brought with them some sort of money or some sort of help besides just the receivership, which takes the power away from the people of the town. It doesn't seem like they've brought much. I do notice that their main reason for taking over is that there was a problem at the administrative and School Committee level and there was way too much turnover. And to piggyback off of what Chairman Jovan said, that sometimes the meetings are only nine minutes long, so when it comes to administrative level, I don't see a lot of transparency from the state. I, I don't think that there's much positive going on with the receivership at all. We can't even fully staff the buildings right now and that was never an issue when this town was in control of its own school system. So, no, and seeing it firsthand, there's, there's like a 70-something percent failure rate across the nation for, for state takeovers. I, I've been very vocal since, actually, since 2005, when I was a junior, I've been very vocal of being against the state takeover publicly, right through, never changed my opinion there. That's about as honest as I can be.
Okay, that's fair. What are your, what would you say if you get, if you end up on the School Committee, what are your key issues? The issues, the real, the really big things you want to work on?
Well, the main thing is, I think what's been alluded to, is, is the lack of transparency. I mean, the receiver speaks a lot about fidelity, which is, it's baffling because there's no transparency. So when a state takes over, the School Committee loses their decision-making ability, but as far as I read into it, that's all they lose, is the ability to make decisions. There's nowhere in the receivership that says you need to leave your elected officials and your community in the dark on all things. It's, it's to trust him or whoever the receiver has been to make those decisions and that the School Committee apparently is not capable of making in the eyes of the state. That being said, that's it. This, this lack of transparency that you've already, already mentioned tonight is the problem. There's no reason to keep everybody in the dark about what's going on over there and if something is requested, I, I, as a School Committee member, would expect it to be handled and, and given to the School Committee. If it's just information, there's no reason. The School Committee's not going to be able to have any decision-making ability on that information, but there's no reason why the person who is supposed to work for this community should be hiding anything from anybody when asked.
Okay. Thank you. And also, as I mentioned to her, what's your feeling on the idea of merging DPW and the School Maintenance Department?
I've never been a fan of that idea. They've been talking about that for years, but I think it's shown here recently in a way for the receiver and the town to try to save some money so that there's more money for the schools, which is not a good idea because the schools have more money now than they, I think they ever have in budget, of course with inflation too, but I'm saying, you have enough money to get this right. You don't, you can't even staff your buildings fully. People are making lots of money. You don't need to start condensing the rest of the town departments in order to save money because you can't do it, right? And when I say you, I mean the receiver. Yeah, very, very honest. I've been, pretty much held these opinions my whole life, so.
Okay. And last question, to follow up on something you mentioned earlier. You've mentioned turnover earlier. How would you, how do you think the system or the receiver ought to address the turnover issue?
Well, I, you can't blame the current receiver for the fact that people don't generally want to work in a district that's in receivership. I mean, collective bargaining agreements are basically scrapped when you have a receiver in charge. So it's, for a teacher, you know, that's big because you could be, you could have as much tenure as you'd like and things won't go the way they're written. So it's, it's hard to answer your question, to convince someone to work here as it is and receivers in the past here have increased the salary that you can make for starting pay and that's helped at times, but it's still a revolving door. When there's, there's no support from administration, when the teachers need the support from the administration, your license as a teacher can be at risk. When you have classrooms where you have 12 kids on an IEP, Individualized Education Plan, and you have 18 kids total in that class and no aides, that is not lawful. And, and when it comes down to it, the teacher can be held responsible for that and the teacher can lose their license to teach. And that's all at the fault of mismanagement from, from the top. I know that, that, that Southbridge, while I always supported Southbridge when we had control of the, the school system, they tried very hard to do their best and there was still some turnover and maybe we didn't do it the right way, but since receivership, there's never been a time where you couldn't staff the building. So it's a problem and I'm not sure at this point, there's a real, like, cut and dry solution on how to stop turnover because it's just gotten worse to almost like unimaginable, like, me telling you that it's not fully staffed is unimaginable to me, how that can happen under this oversight of who.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counsel Lazo.
I'd like to ask the same question I asked. We all know, we have a tremendous amount of experience being involved with the takeover. I was not in favor of the takeover. I continue to talk with people in the system and outside of the system. Revolving door continues. The angry electorate at this point, although we'd like to stay positive and I'm on board with that, it's hard to stay positive when you want to go backwards from where you were five years ago. So when you ask yourself the question, are we better off now than five years ago? The answer is no. So the angry electorate that I'm talking to is considering an unbinding referendum, put it on the ballot, let the people of Southbridge vote to send a message to the Department of Education, who took us over, to say, please leave and let's turn it back over to the town in a transition stage with a timeframe on it, not an indefinite six years, the next one, three years. So I think sending the message through a ballot question is very important to give the people the ability. And as I asked the previous candidate, would you be in favor of the position and where would you stand once the petition is in place?
Right. I've seen a lot of different councilors over the past couple of years do this with the binding petitions, or non-binding petitions on the ballot and I think that's one of the most admirable things. I know I've signed one with Counsel Steves before. I completely support asking them to leave and I would love to help collect signatures for that non-binding ballot question. I will say frankly, though, at this point, if, if they were to leave, they've, a lot of good, great teachers, students, faculty, young and old, have, have left the district and I'm just worried that they're going to kind of leave us in shambles, but I don't see any solution of success with them staying here. So we have to try. We have to, we have to ask them to leave.
Thank you.
Mr. Murch?
Thank you, man, for putting your name forward. It's greatly appreciated to see people stepping up volunteering, especially a homegrown boy from Southbridge, so that's, that's really good to see. During your, actually, I'll, I'll wait to the end. Throughout this, the whole entire questioning that you've gotten from Town Councilors, you've, you've been predominantly negative about what's going on within the School you've been predominantly negative about what's going on within the school system right now, even under receivership. If you are appointed to this position, could you even fathom working with the receiver to try to improve it? Because it seems like you would be coming about it. You're already coming in with a little bit of animus to the situation as it is, especially as, and as a former employee, but can you, it, can you confidently flip that switch and be willing to at least work within the situation that we have now, pending any, like, Council Lazo, uh, petition for a, a non-binding referendum? Would you still try to work with the receiver on making Southbridge Public Schools better?
That's a great question. Um, being opposed to it since, uh, the beginning, when I was a, a student, um, I, I found for six years that I was able to work alongside the school system, uh, no matter who was in charge, uh, especially this past year, I think everybody knew while I worked there that I was against, uh, the state takeover. Um, and it'd be shame on me to not be able to work with the receiver while he's still here. I mean, that just puts me in a situation where I can't do anything at all to help. Um, and, uh, a lot of the things that have gone on are at no fault of the current receiver. Um, so the, the animosity is, is too, an, an entity that's been breathing down our necks for thirteen years. I mean, the person, the commissioner that took over, uh, the Southbridge School System is, is actually not even alive anymore, you know, rest in peace, but he, uh, I'm just saying it's a totally different slate of people than, uh, where some of my animosities, as you said, might lie. Um, but no, if you, if you're unable to work with the, with who's in front of you, then that's shame on, that would be shame on me. I can absolutely continue, just as I had in the past school year, to do the same from this capacity.
Okay. Um, so you said your only goal would be just to, to do more transparency, is that correct? That's what, your main goal for the, the tenure of your appointment would be to increase the transparency from the administration?
I think as the transparency shines through, you'll be able to be revealed a lot greater myriad of problems in front of you than just the transparency. And from there, we'll be able to try to take issues as we can, though we don't have decision-making power, um, you'll be able to see firsthand what's going on. I mean, to be able to get your hands potentially on a line item budget would be able to open your eyes so much more to what's actually going on over there.
All right. And just one last question. I asked this question to Ms. Kathy as well. Um, would you be in support of a community service requirement, uh, for high school students in order to graduate?
Um, I'd have to see how it was laid out and the type of plan it was. I know it's, it's, it's hard to hold people accountable for that, but if, it, to see how many hours, wha-, what does the plan actually look like? Uh, you know, I think you, you could find some help from, uh, Mr. Bishop, I think that might've been a stipulation in one of his, uh, former districts where he's been principal. So he could probably help you a lot with, uh, putting it together the right way. Um, i- if anything done the right way that looks like it's gonna increase, uh, a lot of things at this point in Southbridge, r- rigor, I, anything, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of, uh, things that are well-done and well-thought-out. There's, there's no reason students shouldn't be doing community service if the plan is good, 'cause you got, 'cause to make it a requirement, now that's, it's gotta really be buttoned up tight because it's those kids, if they deserve to graduate, they deserve to graduate. If it's gonna be a requirement, there's gotta be clear-cut guidelines, 'cause that's a person's graduation, and sometimes, you know, people, they go through generations and nobody's graduated high school, and you're about to be first in line to finally graduate, and you need to make sure that you can cross that finish line if you've earned it.
All right. That'll be it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. Shea?
I have to be fair. Um, I know Michael, I knew him when he was much younger, and the things he's saying that he believed then are true. We would often be in the library discussing some of these issues. Um, I would like to ask you, um, everyone's talking about the receiver and all of, and various things, but to me, it's still the academics. How would you view the academics in the Southbridge Public School System?
The academics are struggling right now, and I know I bring a different point of view because I was there firsthand, but, um, without getting too deep into that, let's just say there's a lot more teaching behavior going on right now in the school system than there is teaching core classes. Um, and until they have the support to make their discipline work, um, I, I think they back themselves into a corner in terms of, uh, trying to get good academic, um, education and curriculum laid, laid out. I, I mean, I didn't have a curriculum when I taught there last year. There was no curriculum provided for sixth grade science. So there's just, the only examples I can speak of are from my personal experience. I can't speak to any other classes, um, but there, it's, it's been in a steady decline, and, and everything across the board, academics included, has, has gotten even steeper since , uh, receivership. Uh, like, one of the previous speakers said, "Five years ago, we were in better shape than we were now," and I think to, speaking to academics, that, that is also true.
Thank you, Mr. Montigny. Uh, same question I asked Ms. LaPiori. How would you see your role going forward as a school committee to make sure that meetings are substantive, that information, that you can establish a relationship with the receiver, where it's not adversarial, so that in fact the, there's a welcoming environment? 'Cause I'll have to be honest with you, watching the meeting the other night, it was a very tense meeting just from me looking, uh, watching it in Seattle. Uh, you could see that there was a lot of tension in the room between the school committee and the receiver. How would you work to build that relationship? The receiver's here right now, pending any review or anything that my fellow colleague, uh, Council Lazo had stated. How would you build that relationship so that you could have a working relationship that you can put forward to the community that shows that there's a working partnership between the school committee and the receiver to evolve into, uh, the state, uh, seeing that there is, uh, hope that that could work?
Right. Uh, well, the word "relationship" there, uh, clearly there's two sides to that. So coming in fresh, um, with a fresh year, let's, you said it was a contentious meeting last time, let's say-
I didn't say contentious.
Well, not contentious, sorry. The meet, there was tense.
Tense.
Tense, there was tension. Uh, so let's say next meeting, there's a fully-staffed seven-member board. Uh, personally for me, I can look past the last meeting and try to have a new slate for this next one, and, uh, make it very clear-cut. Um, we would like to see this document, we would like to see this document. Could you find out this information for us by next time? We'll see what the answers to the receiver, if they're yes or no. Um, if there's any pushback, I'm just simply remind him, uh, clearly, when you're in receivership, you only have come here to take the power of the superintendent and the school committee, nothing else, not the lack of transparency and, and things like that. It's just to take the decision-making. So, I mean, we can't hold them accountable in a way of hiring and firing, but if someone, it would be insubordinate. He's not our subordinate anymore, but it's insubordinate to the community and the citizens of Southbridge to not be transparent, especially to tout fidelity as a strong point, um, throughout the tenure of this last receiver. It needs to be transparent, and, well, as long as there's transparency, there should be no reason, because I would be providing my end of the relationship very, uh, straightforward and, uh, welcoming, and if there's any pushback, that's, that would be the receiver not wanting to have a relationship with the school committee, and that wouldn't be on me. Um, but I would try my best every meeting to change that. If that's what you keep seeing every meeting, um, you, you, you try your best to get the message out, I mentioned the, put it in the newspapers, you can, there's plenty of media, social media, as, as much as possible to let people know in, in Southbridge, if that's the way that this year does go, um, well, you have someone working for you, um, that has taken the decision-making away from your elected officials that represent you, and that person does not want to tell your elected officials or you anything, if that's what ends up happening. Um, and that needs to be, that would need to be known, made known to the, to the citizens of Southbridge. And, uh, it sounds like the relationship problems don't stem from the school committee side. So I don't, I wouldn't have a problem, uh, moving forward with trying to get a good relationship. It seems like all seven members would like that.
Okay. I, I'll reserve my comments as to relationship with the receiver because I think he has a far different relationship with this council than perhaps he may have with the school committee, but I will, uh, I will, I will leave it at that because, uh, I, I'm looking really as to how the school committee can evolve with the members and new faces to the fact that, um, it shows that there is a moving forward because the state will not just simply turn over the reins if they don't see a relationship between a school committee and a receiver or a superintendent. So I look forward to seeing how that might evolve. Anything further? Anything further? Okay, thank you, Ms. Montigny.
Thank you.
Okay. So from here, what we'll do is we have two candidates. We'll start with the school committee side, uh, just state, uh, our secretary will call the roll. Uh, just state the candidate that you wish, uh-
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Are we gonna entertain a motion and open it up for just, for other discussion after the comments?
There is no motion because it's-
It says entertain a motion to vote select a candidate to the school committee.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to select a candidate, but there's two candidates, so it's not put one or the other forward. It's, there's two candidates that are-
Are you gonna open it up for discussion, for comments after?
I, I certainly will.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to move the two candidates forward for a roll call vote.
So moved.
Say again? All those in favor? Okay. Discussion on the two candidates. Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I think you knew where I was going with that. Um, so I just want, there's a couple of things I picked up, um, during the conversations with both candidates, and I thank them both for bringing, um, coming forward and wanting to serve on, on the, um, the school committee. Um, one of them was, one of the candidates were asked, or it was mentioned that they're at, like, all the school committees and all the town council, which is, which is great, but that's not just the basis of being appointed. Um, before I was elected for town council, I was at every single town council meeting for like three years, and subcommittee meetings and, and so forth. Um, that does help you get a better understanding of what is going on. Um, and it, there was talk about holding the receiver accountable, I mean, well, um, being more transparent, and I believe, um, that a strong school committee, even though they don't have the powers to, um, to vote on things, I think a strong school committee could hold the receiver accountable to be more transparent, um, at the school committee level and, and be more open, um, with the transparency. So, um, that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Murch?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm super appreciative of the fact that we've had two candidates come in. When I ran, when I pulled papers in January to run for my position, no one ran against me, no one was even inkling to run against me, so the fact that we had two people willing to come up for one seat was great. But I, for me personally, I think we need to have, the candidate that's selected, we need to have a pot, we need to try to press positivity. I understand, especially, my son's at West Street. He just started school today, a nervous wreck, but he started school today, um, in the fifth grade, so this is the last year he's in elementary school, so he, that, today was a little nerve-wracking for him and mom. But, that being said, he came out happy. He came out, he, he enjoyed his day at school, and my wife talked to a couple of other parents, they were really happy with what was going on, at least at West Street there. Focusing on that positive will help us breed more of a positive outlook to continue to grow and progress the Southbridge Public School System. So I think whatever candidate we decide, need to make sure that they have a positive outlook towards the future. I mean, the, the present is not where it needs to be, the past was worse, but we need to look forward. So I don't think that, I think that there was, there's animosity from everyone towards the school system, especially those that have kids or grandkids involved, but I think we, whoever we select needs to be able to push that animus aside and be able to try to work with the receiver. I think each candidate had their strong points, um, from being around children for decades to volunteering within the school system and, or being in the school system and a graduate from the school system. So I think both candidates bring a lot to the table just from different perspectives. So I would just use trying to breed more positive, positive PR, positive discussion. I think that's the direction that we need to go in when selecting a candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lazo?
Uh, yeah, I agree. Working with this new receiver, um, he's a very personable guy. He's not the public enemy, number one. He's not. Don't misunderstand what's being said here tonight. Um, being positive, I'm an eternal optimist, everything's gonna be, everything's gonna turn out all right, all right? We're gonna work through it. But I'm also a gentleman that's been in government a few years, and by, public relations gets dangerous. When you, uh, blowing smoke over a television station, how wonderful everything is, you have a hard time identifying a problem. I'm a fan of identifying the problem, then coming up with a solution, then implementing the solution. But if everybody's singing kumbaya and everything's fine, you got your head in the sand. I think what we have to do as a government is to keep our eyes on the goal, the kids, the town, the tax rate, and our school system. The school committee has no power. Why do the councils have a great relationship? We control the purse strings. We can go back to minimum school expenditure, and all of a sudden, everybody in the state's gonna look at us and wanna talk to us. The reason why the school committee doesn't have any power, that's why when the receiver's had enough, he doesn't pay attention to certain members, and that's his choice. That's why I don't think receivership is working for us. And when we look at some of the positives, there's a lot of positive going on in Southbridge. There's a lot of good going on in the school system despite the receivership. And I think what we have to do is, when you sit on a, a board and you get films of what goes on in the building, you formulate your idea of how to solve that problem. Uh, I hear there's, there's disciplinary problems. We can work on that, but identify it and work on that, communicate with your school committee. And, uh, again, back to what we're here for, two great candidates, two, two, uh, very good candidates, and it's always tough when you have two great candidates coming up, there's some issue that tweaks you to say, "I'm gonna go that way because of this, this, and this." And that's why this country's so great, is because we can disagree, but we don't have to hate each other because we're gonna go to work on the next issue. Whether it be the manager or the receiver, which I wish the receiver was here, I think that this is a Southbridge discussion, a Southbridge vote, and I think we should put the kids first and strive for excellence like the district has done for so many years. But we need to work on identifying problems and curing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
I did, I got you. Anybody else over here? Ms. Shea?
Uh, I've listened to everybody talk about transparency. Chairman Ryan and I had an interesting meeting with the receiver this week, uh, on just that issue. Um, our issue was that he needs to get parents and community involved, and his answer was, "As he turns the district around, that will come." I think it needs to come sooner than the district gets turned around, because I don't really believe the district will get turned around without parent and community support.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Now I'll call for the roll.
Ms., Ms. Shea?
Kathy LaPiori.
Mr. Thoma?
Oh, Misses. Uh, Mr. Montigny.
Mr. Murch?
Kathy LaPiori.
Dr. Page?
Uh, Mr. Montigny.
Chairman Ryan?
Ms. LaPiori.
Mrs. LaPiori.
Counselor Catrona?
Mr. Montigny.
Counselor Daniel?
Ms. LaPiori.
Counselor Lazo?
Montigny.
Counselor Manna?
Mr. Montigny.
Counselor Marquetti?
Montigny.
Counselor Nash?
Montigny.
Counselor Steve?
LaPiori.
And Chairman Jovan?
Montigny.
I had eight for Montigny and six for LaPiori.
Thank you. Anything further from either body?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Montigny and Ms. LaPiori. Thank you.
Mr. Murch? Mr. Montigny, say a few words?
Do you'd like to say a few words, Mr. Montigny?
Do you like to say a few words, Mr. Montigny?
I know you guys have a whole meeting to do after this, but thank you very much. It's an honor to finally serve on a board, and just to add to my resume of all the different hats I've worn here in Southbridge, I've loved every minute of every hat I've ever worn, and I can't wait to get to work with all of you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Take a quick five-minute recess.